Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting the order of day fifteen. We can tell that it's in line with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, P L nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. It was properly noticed and been posted and certified by the clerk, Paul Rowkway.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Here.
Mr. Roberts will not be here. Mr. Schindler.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mayor Francis.
Here. Please join me with the flag flip.
The citizens of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your name and course, Brad, Dr. Duke?
Sure. Mayor, at the last meeting, we had several individuals who lived on Hudson Avenue, and they had contracted with one individual who reported Lee had taken various amounts of upfront money from these residents. The claim was that the contractor never showed up to do the required work. I just wanted to thank the Opacon Police Department for the recent arrest of this contractor. He will now face a criminal justice if though. Next, we've been working across all four towns for solutions for the violations of unlawful noise emanating from vessels in Byron Cove. I can report the following. New Jersey State Police patrols have increased to seven days per week on Lake Opacon. There are two shifts between twelve A M. and twelve midnight, with an overlap of the shifts between two P M. and six P M. The direct line to the Opacon station is nine seven three, six six three, three four oh one. If no one answers the call, it is transferred to Carteret. Again, nine one one is the best number to call in a true emergency. New Jersey State Police clarified with the Carteret station that there is no ten P M. noise restriction in Opacon ordinance. Our ordinance can be enforced any time of the day. Carteret is also instructed to record all complaints for Lake Opacon. Lake Opacon residents should be instructed to identify any boat by its registration when calling the New Jersey State Police. The registration number can be provided anonymously, and a note can be made on the record so a trooper will see the complaint next time that the boat is stopped. Opacon Police Department is working with the New Jersey State Police in Morris County to identify and cite vessels in Byron Cove who violate Opacon's unlawful noise ordinance. Mayor, on another matter, our residents will be faced with a referendum this fall by the Opacon School District on the fourth Tuesday of September the twenty-sixth. I am understanding that the school board last fall spent over fifty thousand dollars for a study to determine what should be done with our school system, and we will be asking the school board if this study will be made public. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Chris, you're up.
Mayor.
John, you're up.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. From the Recreation Commission, they had their concert in the park on a couple Saturdays ago. It went very well. Uh, I don't remember the name of the band. Um, it was Rachel something and the guys. But Rachel wasn't there. She apparently got sick and they replaced her, so. But I was there for a while. It was actually very good. Um, and it was a decent crowd there. Street hockey, they had a lot of conversation about street hockey. The season is over. Uh, there will be a fall season, as I understand, but they had a lot of conversation regarding street hockey, trying to figure out where it's going in the future. Uh, their next event, they have another concert in the park for August nineteenth, one to three P M. at the gazebo. They're not sure who the band is. They have a couple of bands lined up, but they were also working with the high schools to get parts of the high school band there, and I'm not sure where they're going. So they haven't really, uh, released any schedules or who's gonna be there. They also had conversation regarding Opacon Days, which is September ninth, and they did change one event schedule for December. They changed the December tree lighting to December third, so it does not conflict with, um, Santa in the Park, which is Sep- uh, December ninth. So, moving on, uh, although not from the Recreation Commission, Miss Opacon, we had our pageant not this past Saturday, this Sunday, the Sunday before. It was an interesting day. It was forecast for heavy rain. They were right. Um, we did have a, we had a little rehearsal at ten o'clock in the morning. We set everything up, and then it was, the event was scheduled for one o'clock, and at about ten after twelve, the sky opened up and didn't let up until all afternoon. We scrambled, moved it inside to here, actually. Um, and everybody was very appreciative and very supportive of, we had a little bit of a delay. But we got the, the, um, event in, and we have our new mini-miss is Caroline Shortnick. Our little mister is Chase Blunt. He's going pro, by the way. This is his second year in a row as little mister. Junior miss was Angeline Cardy, and our new Miss Opacon is Christie Brennan. Um, she's actually a junior in high school. She's gonna be a senior, I believe, this coming year. Um, but it was a nice event. It was very well attended, and it did rain very hard all afternoon, so everybody was very thankful that we scrambled and moved it inside. And once again, that event was sponsored by the Opacon Warriors Youth Football Program. Uh, last thing, the police, August first, uh, Tuesday, August first, is National Night Out, and this is the second year in a row where our police will be doing an event that night from six o'clock till whenever at Veterans Field. It's a free event. They have music there. They'll have a bounce house, an ice cream truck, and a dump tank. I tried to find out who's gonna be in the dump tank, uh, but they wouldn't tell me. At any rate, it's, it's a great thing. It's just a way for the community, especially young people, to see the other side of law enforcement. You know, they are human. Um, anyway, it's, like I said, that's August first, uh, Tuesday, August first, from six till whenever at Veterans Field. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, you're up.
Sussex County Chamber of Commerce, we're in the planning stages of Sussex County Days. So mark your calendars, September seventeenth. Um, because we're in the planning stage, we're also looking for volunteers. If anybody's interested, please contact me directly. Um, over the Sussex County Municipal Utilities Authority, the next paper shooting event is July twenty-first. That's the right event.
Okay. Christine? All right. Dave, administrative report.
Yes, Mayor. Um, today, actually yesterday, we received the certified tax rate from the County, um, Board of Taxation. Uh, so the certified tax rate is three point four nine nine. Um, that is composed of point six eight five cents on county tax, point zero five three library tax, point zero zero three county open space tax. Um, district school tax is one point eight one six. Municipal open space is point zero zero one, and municipal purpose tax is point nine four one, which is down from last year. Point nine four two. Uh, on, uh, D V W., uh, the Phase One Milling and Pavement Project is complete. Um, the total tonnage involved was four thousand five hundred thirty-two point four five tons. Uh, they've been involved with tree cleaning up from the recent storms, hot patch on some of the other roads, uh, that, that needed attention. Uh, they weren't able to complete the repairs, uh, at the Northwood Steps and, uh, straighten, straighten Ballard. Um, well, twelve, I'm happy to report has zero detection of PFAS, um, after the, the G A C units, uh, have been brought up online. And Mariner's well, the pad is being installed today and tomorrow. So I have to.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we had auction of non-conforming property. Turn it over to you, Congress.
Thank you. Um, so we will now hold a public auction for non-conforming properties pursuant to all the terms and conditions in the authorizing ordinance. The first property offered for auction is address thirty-nine Madison Trail, block three, uh, three zero two zero three, lot one, um, with a minimum bid of three thousand four hundred and seventy-five. The bidding is only open to adjacent property owners. Is there anybody wishing to place the minimum bid? And the amount, three thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars? Is everybody else wishing to place a bid? Going once, going twice, auction closed. The second property, um, offered for auction is one twenty-four Jefferson Trail, block four thou- uh, four zero four one four, lot three nine, with a minimum bid of five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for an adjacent property owner. Is there anybody wishing to make the minimum bid? Okay, at the amount of, um, five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes.
Is there anybody else wishing to make a bid? Going once, going twice, auction closed. Just to mention, um, for both of the bidders, um, for the first auction, a deposit of the amount of seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents is due on Friday, and for the second auction of one twenty-four Jefferson Trail, that deposit is nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, due on Friday. Mayor, I might give a recommendation to close the auction pursuant to the due on Friday.
I'll make a motion to close the auction and accept all bids.
Second, should we get their names on the record? Oh, you do?
I do.
Okay.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Young.
Yes.
Okay. Now, we have proclamations. So, Brad, you wanna come give me a hand?
Sure.
Or a ten years to. And for those of you that don't know, Opacon took the gold medal this year at the Senior Olympics. We beat, we beat out Vernon, Sparta, Hardeston, Y M C A, and Montague. So congratulations. Well, we're just up here.
All right, let's, uh, let's start out with, uh, on the golf putt. Be bound. Christine Giles. Come on. And while she's up here, she also got the pink apron on for, uh, horseshoes. Okay. We're gonna just get everybody up here. So, uh, on the all-important ladder toss, we got bronze medal for Anita Job. And the gold kick, men's, Rocco. We have in the cornhole on the men's, we got Roy Steinfeld. Rocco also brought home the bronze in that for the cornhole. And supposedly, for the first time playing this game, Christine Smith brought home the bronze in the cornhole. Uh, our tortoise, by the way, uh, our total score.
You forgot one.
I know. I was gonna try and skip that guy.
No.
I somehow stole a golden horseshoe. I don't know. Uh, it's interesting. This is the first time I'm seeing the points scored. You might be interested in this. Montague, three eighty-eight. Y M C A was three seventy-five. Uh, Hardeston is three twenty-three. Sparta was three ninety-four. Four twenty-one for Vernon, and then we had four forty-one. You wanna do this right, the proclamation first? You got it.
Tighten up a little bit if you could for this. There we go. Proclamation celebrating the two thousand twenty-three Senior Olympics, Team Opacon, gold medal. Whereas the Sussex County Division of Senior Services hosted the annual Sussex County Senior Olympics on Thursday, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, and whereas Team Opacon took home the gold medal with a total score of four hundred and forty-one, edging out Team Vernon and Team Sparta. And whereas, Opacon seniors are very active in community events, and many have participated in previous Senior Olympics, and whereas the Borough Opacon is truly fortunate to have these Senior Olympic winners living in their community. Their years of volunteering and caring for others make them outstanding citizens, and we all thank them for their participation in Team Opacon for two thousand twenty-three Sussex County Senior Olympics, and they are to be emulated in our community. Now, therefore, I, Michael Francis, Mayor of the Borough Opacon, do hereby proclaim July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, as a day of celebration honoring Team Opacon Senior Olympic participants. Congratulations.
You're gonna take a photograph.
You know, we're gonna be talking about our community and, and the fabric of our community, and our senior citizens are a very, very important part of our community. And so they're, they're volunteers. As you can see, they're, they're a good team. They're a winning team, and that's a good thing. So we, we thank you very much, and we really do appreciate our seniors in our town. We do.
Everybody and all the supporters.
And this right here is our cheerless leader right here. She got the spirit award for it. So Anna got the most spirit. That means she, she yelled a lot.
All right, look over here. Look over here. Tighten in a little bit. Tighten in a little bit.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
How are you?
Over on camera? Right now, and then make a motion for the open, uh, meeting to public comment. So move. Call the favor. Aye. An opportunity given to the public for commentary. Comments are limited to one comment. For no more than five minutes. Welcome.
Uh, Rachel Rodriguez, my client, right? My first question is, have there been any updates with the Northwood Grants? Either one of the two? My second question is, how are employee salaries set? Are they set by ordinance or are they set by resolution? The second part of that question, um, are there any employees at the borough that would need their salary to be passed by resolution and then by ordinance? My third question, um, so these two questions are actually for our, our borough attorney, and Mr. Urson's not here this evening. Is it okay if I direct the questions to you? Okay. Uh, there was a land use board meeting this past, um, Tuesday night, and the question was asked as whether or not their recorded meetings can be posted to YouTube to act as a resource for any applicant, um, maybe who can take all the notes that were required historically. Videos have been shared to YouTube, um, and they wanted advisement from the municipal attorney, and I believe they will be reaching out. So I just wanted to ask, you know, can they in fact post those recorded meetings to, um, a public forum for the residents? And my other question, um, Mayor Francis advised the president of the land use board to hold a private vote as to whether or not the meeting should be back in person um, or remain on Zoom. So should that vote have been held publicly on the record according to Sunshine? And that was it. Thank you.
Mayor Lewis, um, I recently received some copies today from the clerk's office, and I believe I was overcharged. Um, I was charged five dollars and eighty cents, and there were only supposed to be five cents a copy, according to our, our rule book, which is one oh eight dash one, number twelve, says five cents a copy. Doesn't specify anything else. So whether it was under O P R. or whether it was under copies is still five cents. And mine was also a follow-up from Mr. Urson, and, um, did I, okay. I, it was basically based on the same thing, and I said, since the land use board depers to Mr. Urson, I'd like to know if Mr. Urson, if the land use board requested his advice about continuing their meeting via Zoom, and if so, what his advice was, and did it include letting employees and contracted employees vote and not holding the vote in public? Thank you.
Hey, folks, doing. Um, my name is Steven Fabrosco. I live over at thirty-seven Long Ave, uh, looking at one of the same one. And my question to the council is, with, now that we have a noise ordinance with the, with the boats and whatnot in, uh, at on the lake, what is also being done about the residents in and around the lake area uh, for noises and nuisance from activities such as, uh, uh, like beach parks? Uh, we live in and around the Crescent, the Crescent Cove area, and myself and Pamela have had numerous issues with noises, nuisance, and ongoing noise for seven days a week, and we've had many complaints about it. Uh, we're curious to know what can be done about this, what will be done about it, and is there any recourse for residents in an area like that that have, uh, issues with this? Uh, myself, I work from home. My wife, she has MS, and the noise is a big issue for her. It really makes it difficult for her to relax, for her to be able to enjoy her quiet time. Uh, I'm not alone when I say this. All, all the residents in and around the Crescent Cove area have had issues with this.
Some are hearing with us today as well.
Yep. That's pretty much all I have to say. Okay.
Do you wanna say anything yet, Jim?
Okay, I just agree with, with you, Brian.
You're up.
We should show them the grades. We have to show them all around.
More public?
No.
Go ahead.
My name is Sandra Stephen. I live at Dave Hudson Avenue, directly across from the Swim Club. I do have a question in regards to their parking area. There is a parking lot that is on the side next to the pump house there, and then there are parking spaces directly in front of my property. I had requested, when they put the lines in, to please just have an area right next to my driveway indicating no parking so I can get out of my driveway when the Swim Club is in operation. And they're having cars that have been parked there in the no parking area. It's difficult because we have to back out of the driveway. I have a very steep driveway, and it's difficult to see because it's right near the corner, the curve there, and cars come speeding around the curve, and I have to pull all the way out into the middle of the road to try to get out of my driveway. Last Saturday, I took pictures. There were cars that were parked here. There was a car that was, had stopped there to go run over the Swim Club to ask questions. They were halfway in my driveway. I couldn't even get out. We were heading out of the house because the noise across the street is very loud. I've been there for twelve years. I've never had any issues until last year, and it's difficult trying to get out on the weekend just so I can go do my shopping and any other errands I have to do. The noise also, but that is, you know, I'm right across the street. It's, we close our windows all summer long. I can't even leave the windows open. It's so loud.
Mayor Francis members of council, my name is Jack Sheridan. I live at eight Crescent Road, right across the street from the Beach Club. On many occasions, we have complained to, uh, Ms. Sutton, Mrs. Sutton, about the noise, and we've complained, Mayor Francis, to, uh, Councilman, uh, Hoppercam, and to the police commissioner. But what I do have to say is, as of Saturday, uh, Ms. Sutton has advised us that she has changed the speakers, and although we're right across the street, we don't hear the noise, the loud music anymore. Now, of course, if she changes the orientation of the speakers, you know, obviously we preserve her right to complain again. Thank you.
More public?
Hi, Jennifer Johnson, six Norita Concap. I just wanna remind everybody that Taco Palooza was rained out, and it is on July thirty at Hilltop Field. All proceeds go to benefit Opacon elderly. Thank you.
More public? Move the green back. Second, on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Rachel, what were your question on Northwood?
The status of the, the two grants that we had applied for.
Yeah, I haven't heard back yet.
Okay.
Employee salaries are, are public record. I think you should be able to look up whatever salaries are. Usually they're, we, we do have an ordinance, the, the minimum and maximum. You, you can explain that.
Yeah, basically, um, uh, certain positions are, um, uh, set by resolution. Um, uh, others are set by contract. Uh, there's, uh, the salary ordinance is the guiding, um, document that would be amended from time to time. And then there's the collective bargaining ordinance, and the collective bargaining agreements have a salary range, um, titles and, and a salary range. So basically, we're in compliance with the contract, and we are paying a union wage. So there are promotions and change of titles and so forth that would be, uh, represented by the union that would be, um, set along the range, and in the collective bargaining.
Okay. Yeah. While casting the, uh, the meeting, we're, we're looking into that. Actually, I'm, I'm working with the optimum now to see what we can do with that. We are looking into that. We're looking into, uh, there's a record keeping that we have to look into. I'm not sure of all the details. We're, we have to look at the legality of that. If they say it's okay, we'll, we'll livestream them. Uh, but the problem with O P R. is how would you participate? And so the question is, if we do that, do we get, do we get complaints because we're livestreaming and you can't participate? We have to sort that out.
No, it's for land use. Land use specifically, not this meeting. Land use record, like as you're live.
All meetings.
Okay.
We would like to livestream all meetings.
Well, they do. They're only virtual. They're not in person.
We're gonna look into live streaming all meetings that we have.
Okay. My question was specifically about the recording, though.
This is not a discussion. This is whether it's recreation, land use, council, whatever meeting is a public meeting in this, in this venue, I would like to livestream. So we're looking into the, the tech, the, the technicality of that, and so that will answer all the questions, and, and, uh, I just wanna make sure that we, we cover all the points because, uh, so we, we livestream a meeting and someone offers to, to that meeting. So, uh, we have to look at all that, all the details, be, be prepared for that, so we're responsible for that record. So the question is, if we livestream to Facebook, is that, does that satisfy the requirements? I don't know the answer.
Should I repeat my question?
We're dealing with our attorney. We'll be dealing with Trenton. We'll be dealing with the D C A. And when they all say, when they all give a guide on what to do, then, then we'll do that. But we are working on technology also. Uh, the land use board, I, I requested that, by the way. I have my opinion, which is my opinion. I requested that they poll it. It wasn't a private vote. It wasn't a group. I asked the, uh, I asked the chairperson to, to talk to the, individually, to the, uh, land use board, see what they wanted to do. He reported back that they wanted to keep it, uh, on Zoom. Like I said, I have my opinions on that, but, uh, our meetings are live. Uh, overcharged on the O P R. What is that?
Did it print double-sided?
It printed double-sided, but it says five cents a page. That's what we're doing.
No, I understand that. I just, I didn't realize it had printed double-sided, so coming tomorrow, we'll give you your money back.
Do you? All right. Steven, an answer to your noise ordinance, uh, in the borough. Steven, in answer to your noise ordinance, uh, in the borough, we have begun, people will, will attest to this. We have begun to enforce the ordinance, no matter where you're at. Although Byron Bay is an issue that we deal with the state police, by the way, the state police have commented that ordinance is one that they can enforce. The other boroughs and township have ordinances that are difficult to enforce. For example, some ordinances, uh, involve sound measurements and decibels. Uh, that's a quagmire because it's too technical. Or I say, if really quite frankly, if you affect the quality of life of someone, we need to address that. So the nuisance and all that, uh, so, uh, our police are actively enforcing it. They have, they've reported. Uh, I believe they, they gave us some, I'm not sure.
Maybe.
Huh?
Maybe.
Yeah, so, uh, nothing is perfect. We're going to keep, we're going to keep at it. We will not stop. Uh, in, in the, specifically Crescent Cove, uh, we've been working really hard on that and of course, uh, I get beat up on that too. Well, you know, you're the mayor, you should fix that. Well, unfortunately, I don't have a switch to fix. But I do have the perseverance and the patience to keep working with the person, to let them know that they are affecting other people's quality of life. And hopefully, I can convince them, which I've started to, to, uh, to not disturb people. And if they keep doing it, they're going to get cited again. And so, uh, we will keep doing that. I wish I could turn it off instantly, but people being people, uh, sometimes it's difficult, but I will not stop until we fix it. And we will fix it, or, or else the person will run out of money.
Uh, you want to please ask a question?
If that's how you feel, Mayor, then how come today I was told that if I continued to call the police on the matter, that I would then be considered the one that was harassing?
I can't speak to that, but I can tell you, the, the conversation I've had with our chief of police and our, and our police department, uh, to enforce the ordinance. That, that, anything else that happens is civil, but I want to make sure that the noise ordinance is enforced, and it will be. It will continue to be, and we won't, we won't stop that. How other people react to that, I, I can't speak to that. I can speak to what I'm going to do with our law enforcement. And so hopefully the, the message will get there that it's, it's not worth, you know, trying to be cute or anything like that. We, we will keep on it.
Appreciate that.
I have that commitment from my police commissioner, from my chief of police. We had a conversation about it. Our officers are beginning to understand that, the importance of that, and you will see, you'll see a difference. You will. Maybe not as instant as we'd like, but you will.
For now.
Okay. I, I'm, 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 I'm honest and straightforward as can be.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And I will continue to do that, but we won't stop working.
Thank you.
Okay, what have I missed? Well, Jack, I, I'm glad you reported that the noise is a little bit better. Uh, so we'll, uh, it, it's a step in the right direction. Let's put it that way. All right.
They're trying to adjust the parking.
Oh, the parking. Yes, yes, yes. Is there no parking sign there?
Yes.
They painted it on the road. I had asked them when they were putting the lines, then they just put something there. So.
As a courtesy, I did that.
Well, maybe, maybe I can suggest.
I didn't have to do it.
Maybe I should could, could suggest they put some cones there.
The police told me that people can park there.
Well.
The cars are perpendicularly parked, not.
You're right across the street.
Power level. Yeah, on that house, the first house.
Yeah, I, I saw you were driving because I went up and knocked on your door, but you weren't home.
I worked during the day.
Yes, I'm familiar with that. Well, we'll, we'll take a look at that and see what we can do. All right, I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll try to figure out something that, that will let you get out of your driveway safely.
The driveway is never blocked.
It was last Saturday when I tried to leave my home.
We're going to, we're going to keep working on that. Uh, we don't want that.
There's no problem.
We're going to, we're going to keep working on that, okay, to see, to make sure you have a safe exit out of your driveway.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Are we back? We're back. Thank you. Uh, approval of minutes, approval of the, uh, six twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three executive minutes?
Um, Mayor, since, um, Mr. Roberts is not here, can we move them both at the same time?
It's okay with me.
Uh, okay, I'll make a motion to approve both the minutes from six twenty-two, twenty-three and seventy-five, twenty-three.
Second.
Call roll.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Young.
Yes.
All right, resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three, one twenty-one, vote please.
Does anyone need anything removed or discussed? Not hearing or seeing any, Mayor. I'm going to go with this entirety.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Entertaining motion for the approval of consent agenda.
Don't move. Second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Ordinance, these are introductions. Ordinance sixteen, twenty twenty-three, par to be vacating a portion of Allendale Road right away. Ordinance par to be vacating a portion of Allendale, Allendale Road right away in the Borough of Paxton, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey.
Don't move. Second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Ordinance seventeen, twenty twenty-three, ice retardant system, an ordinance of the Borough of Paxton, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, to replace chapter one thirty-seven, ice retardant system.
So move. Second.
Call roll.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
These are final, final hearings. Ordinance fourteen, twenty twenty-three, open space recreation trust appropriation. An ordinance to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars in the municipal open space recreation trust for the purpose of recreational improvement for the Rotary and Remembrance Park.
Don't move. Second.
I'll open it to public, any comments or questions?
Um, I'm speaking out of terms here or any questions?
Come on up and give the quick.
Yep, yep. Take him along, Brad. Um, and again, I didn't, I'm a rookie at this, so, um, I know about the public comment section and everything else like that, but I was wor, I was just, I'm sorry. Let me hold back up. Dave Thompson, twenty, Thompson Lane, and he'll pack on.
Okay.
So I was curious about the ordinance about the vacating a portion of Allendale Road. And I have some concerns about that. I don't know if this is a prime to say it or anything else.
No, no, it's not. This is introduction. Uh, the public hearing on that will be.
August second.
Uh, when?
August second.
August second.
Then, then you, uh, that's when we have the public hearing on it. Then you make your comments. Fair enough. All right, thank you. You could, you could call or email me your question and I'll have our, our rural engineer give you, uh, you, attempt to answer your question for you. Oh, I appreciate it. Still obviously justified, but. Yeah. We didn't have the answer. Who's that person you're going to go to? Uh, John Rushkey, the rural engineer. Rushkey? Yes. Move mud and film.
Yeah, get your question to Dave and then we'll try to get all the detail today.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, I see. Okay. Yes? Nope.
What, what, are you, you comment on this ordinance?
Yes.
For the, for the par.
Yeah, no.
For the Allendale Road. No, that's, that's on August second.
Okay, that's fine. But if you have questions, like the other gentleman, send them to Dave.
Get a hold of Dave, so we'll get, get all the detail.
I hope you get it from him. That's what I'm here for. I, I know. That's what I'm here for too. I'm with Katz's Marina and we're concerned about it too.
Yeah. But that final, the, the final hearing is the public hearing. The introduction is just introduction.
Is there a copy of the ordinance we can get? Yeah. Yeah, we just voted on it to do it. So now it can be public. So you can get it and look at it and any questions. And then we'll, you know, so you're prepped for the public. So I can get like tomorrow or the next day and get a copy? Yes.
Do we have a copy now?
Oh my God. Now it's like home.
Here, here the copy. Here the copy.
You'd like your copy to have from ready?
Can I get a copy too, please?
Yep. I think Dave went out to make some.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Not a problem.
Oh, he's going to give it business card.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I just say something? I, I wasn't aware that, I live on Allendale Road, so part of the reason why this is here is because of me. Uh, but there's a bigger concern for all the neighbors and people who live there, given the condition of the road and all that. So I didn't realize that during the public comment, that, that's when I should have commented on the road. But, uh, I have, my attorney sent to Mr. Urson all the information regarding what's happening with the road and the condition. You and I met, uh, as well as other council people.
Well, I, I suggest you talk to your neighbor. Give him the details.
We are.
We are.
Yeah.
Yeah. We just want you to have all the details so that we can all decide if that's, then, you know, that's the way to handle the situation that we have right now.
Yeah, that'll be.
It's bigger than just vacating a portion of the road. It's.
Yeah. That'll be August second. Well, then people are going to see any detail.
Yeah, I have a chance to respond. Just wait till after.
Oh, all right. Give it, give it that phone in the back.
It's missing a pen and a pen tip, which is a visual. Did you get one?
No, we didn't.
Okay, it's missing a pen and a pen. But we'll have that tomorrow.
All right.
You're welcome.
All right. We're at ordinance fifteen, twenty twenty-three, short term property rental agreement amendment and ordinance. What? Okay, okay, vote on the, uh.
And we had opened it to public.
Yeah, yeah, public does. We got sidetracked. Move the green back. On favor?
Second.
We're back. On roll. This is the open space.
Yes.
Open space.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
I'm going to stay on that.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Ordinance fifteen, twenty twenty-three, short term property rental amendment. An ordinance amended chapter one eight nine, short term rentals in the code of the Borough of Paxton.
So move. Second.
I'll open that to the public for comments and questions. Mayor, please.
Second.
On favor?
Aye aye.
Call roll.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, one twenty-two, refund for construction progress.
So move. Second. Call roll.
Mr. Hoppercamp.
Yes.
Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Hold it. Move it. I don't have a lot to say. Again, I, I'd like to congratulate our senior. They're, they're great. They're, they're such a great school of people. I, I can't tell you. They're, they're just a blessing. They are. The first phase of paving is done. Been on some of the roads, Northwestern is pretty nice. Uh, big improvement. Second phase paving will start. More pricing to see what the final prices of this paving were, but the, uh, the cost of the paving and the oil goes up and down, but I'm sure we'll be able to do more. We're going to have a car show on Sunday, the twenty-third at the Walgreens Parking Lot along with our marketplace. And I believe that the fire department is having a car show and, uh, animals too. I think they're going to have an adoption thing. So we're going to have a lot of activity going on by number three, uh, the Walgreens Parking Lot and of course, the, uh, the marketplace. I think, I think we're going to have food trucks too, so, and they're pretty nice. I think Michelle is going to be there and she's great. Good stuff. Uh, 3M lawsuit, which we are part of that, uh, 3M has settled for a large amount of money. More than ten million. A lot of money. I don't know where we're at with the, I'm, I will do a press release on that when our attorney approves it. I will not speak out of turn because it's still litigation and, uh, I've learned a hard way. We shouldn't say too much unless it comes from the attorney, right, Counselor?
Correct.
Yes. So I'll wait on that. The water, uh, is looking good. Uh, I sent a letter with the water bill. I would like to send more, but the D P will, will, they forbade me to. So I have taken tests at a sink, I've taken tests at a hole that actually was right in this area and over north of the bridge. Our water meet is below the standard, below the standard for P M O's. We're going to, uh, do, uh, Mariner Well will be next. We just poured the pad today. When we get that, you have to understand that our water is mixed. So people say, well, I live by river stick well, so is my water good? Well, probably. But most of the water is much improved. And so I can, I, I'm going to now, uh, schedule some tests for our water tanks. So all of our wells, misful wells, our misful water pump to these tanks and the water gets mixed. What's happening is the dilution factor has now made our well, our water much safer, much improved. So I, I, I'm hesitant to say much more except it, it's very promising. It, it's very positive. When I get the water tank readings, I'll be happier, but I can tell you right now that the water right in this area meet the standard by a lot. And the water up, uh, north of the bridge up near St. Jude meet the standard by a lot. And so I wanted to put that in my letter to the, to the municipal water users, but my attorney and my engineer and, and the people in Trenton, D P, said if I do, they'll give me a lot of trouble. So I didn't. But I can tell you, I can tell you that the water is vastly improved if you're on misful water. If you're not on misful water, uh, you're on your own well, the, and you have it tested and you have a problem, the state will actually pay for a treatment system. It's under this Phil Act and it's on our website. The application form is actually on our website and it's been there for two years. Just have to go into the water and look at that. And then, uh, some people actually, I know a couple of people have already done it. And there's other people that, it, it, the, the, the state has no regulation on private well. They could care less on what you drink, but if you sell your house, then it's got to meet the state requirements. But meanwhile, there's no regulation on private well. But what, uh, I will help anybody that has a problem with that. We have helped people with that and will continue to. So, uh, you might hear it scuttlebutt, but, and they say, well, the town should have did something with the private well. Well, that's like me going fifty year debt. I cannot use taxpayers' money to fix private property. We just can't do it. I would be in serious trouble then. But we can advise you what to do and we can steer you in the right direction. What's coming down the pike is, uh, lead lines. In their infinite wisdom, the Department of Environmental Protection has said that a galvanized line is lead. I don't know where they went to school, but my, my chemistry class is saying galvanizes zinc and iron. So, but they're going to still treat that as lead and regulate it as such. But so I have some, some requests for grants that are going to help proper with that, I hope. So, and that time is for water. So with that being said, I'll entertain a move to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you for coming.